Call the meeting to order as usual. Has the clerk call the roll?
Belsley.
Here.
Bluenier.
Here.
Herr.
Here.
Layman.
Here.
Newman.
Here.
Parrott.
Here.
We have a quorum.
I ask you to join me in the flag of allegiance.
It's on the phone. Took the wrong.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There is no public hearings or presentations or special reports, I don't believe. Is there anyone that'd like to make any public comments? If not, the consent agenda tonight is the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting, September 17th, 2018, and the approval of the bills. I could have a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a first and second hand comments. Call the roll.
Bluenier.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Layman.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Motion passes.
I have three items tonight. First is the reappointment of Mr. Matt Thicke, Jenna Grimm, Todd Grimm, and Dane Zeller to the Business District Commission, and their terms would be ending April 30th, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? Call the roll.
Herr.
Yes.
Layman.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Bluenier.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Second item is the reappointment of Ginger Herman to the Village Representative on the Peoria Area Convention and Visitors Bureau.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? Call the roll.
Layman.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Bluenier.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Motion passes.
The reappointment of Doug Shafnet to the Police Pension Fund Board, and his term would be ending April 30th, 2020.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any comment? Call the roll.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Bluenier.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Layman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
And I personally like to thank all those that are willing to serve. Several of them are serving a second term, and it just really appreciated when everybody says yes. Thanks to the citizens. Village Clerk.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Village Administrator.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Chief of Police.
Just an announcement that we're again participating in the National Drug Takeback Day, and that'll be Saturday, October 27th, from the hours of 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m.
I know it's tied on the TV. Thank you. Corporation Council.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Director of Fire and Emergency Services.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Well, we got quick through most of the agenda, now it gets difficult. Director of Public Works.
Several items tonight, Your Honor. First is item A. In front of you is Resolution 10-19. This is a supplemental resolution for MFT funds under the Illinois Highway Code. This is appropriating motor fuel tax money for road salt. If you'll remember, I came forward previously with a resolution. This will bring our total to 2,500 tons in Tazewell County, and it's to bid this, I think, October 18th, they open bids for this. And this would match tonnage-wise, dollar-wise, with what we've budgeted, if that makes sense.
Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? Call the roll.
Parrott.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Bluenier.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Layman.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next item, I'd like to ask for acceptance of bid for water softening salt in the amount of $115.87 per ton delivered and award of contract for same to Cargill Salt.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? Call the roll.
Belsley.
Yes.
Bluenier.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Layman.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next, in front of you is Resolution 11-19. This is from last meeting. This is authorization of expenditures for the construction of sidewalk along 328 West Birchwood Street.
There are motions.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments?
Basically, this was approved at last meeting and through the discussion with our attorney about the use of gas funds. So this is authorizing the expenditure of gas funds not to exceed $15,000 to finalize this work.
Any other comments?
I guess the question is, just to reiterate, and I don't mean to reiterate the point, but it's 100% is through the gas fund, is that correct?
Yeah. I mean, for what, from going forward? So sidewalk, tree removal, that.
Why, can we get just some clarity for benefit of, I guess, better understanding our decisions for funding like this? This is, it started out as being solely sidewalk installation, and it's morphed into, you know, looking at the proximity of a gas line that needs relocating to it. And now it becomes an eligible cost. And so it's resulted in, I was, quite frankly, I was surprised to see this resolution on the table, because I thought after our last board meeting, it was eligible for funding from the general fund or the gas fund. And I, I guess, seeing it in the form of a resolution now legitimizes it. If in fact, I guess, I'm unfamiliar with this process, because we've had gas work done in the past, that we don't need resolutions to approve the funding.
Reason it's before you is resolution is because during our last meeting, I mentioned that it would be back before you to authorize the funding and the specific expenditure. So during the last meeting, I stated that you're voting on the entering into the right-of-way agreement and the contracts to implement to construction would come back before you later. After meeting and review of your procurement policy, your bidding policy, I noted that these are the types of ordinances which are, or excuse me, the types of contracts which your director has vested discretion to enter into without coming back to the board. But since I had taken the position at the last meeting that you would see this come back before you, instead of your director utilizing the vested authority which he has, here's my recommendation that we bring it back to the board, because that's what I represented would happen. So that's why it's back before you in a resolution.
I just would like to comment, this seems to be an awful convoluted process that we went through. It seemed like we somehow made the means justify the ends there or something. It is what it is, we've already entered into a contract.
I guess I just want to say, I have opposite opinion, thank you for the work, because one of the problems was the funding of it out of the general fund, which we do know that we struggle with. Do believe it was a safety issue. We also had one of our supervisors from the gas fund say that if we can get the right-of-way, move that gas line, it was the right thing to do for now and the future. So appreciate the work that you guys did on that. Glad you guys brought it forward for us.
I agree with Sam. I couldn't have said it better.
Then we better start looking next year to putting money in the budget to cross Main Street and look at all the missing sidewalk on East Birchwood. Because if that's the basis for the need for safety to install sidewalk, then there's a lot of areas around town that are justifiably needing sidewalk installation. And I don't buy it that it's a safety issue. We've discussed this, but I wasn't going to go there, but I feel it's, it needs to, the public needs to hear the opposing side too. I just don't see it as a safety issue at all. And it's more of a personal preference to finish sidewalk on one property that we're installing 250 lineal feet for at a cost of $15,000. That'll primarily benefit one homeowner, because there's sidewalk on the other side of the street completely from Detroit to Main Street. I find it hard to see it as a safety issue. We're also paying for the removal of trees, and we have a citizen in the audience that's going to benefit from the hardwood from that tree that we're paying to bring down. So I don't fault the homeowner, it's a great deal for them. It's, I'm just not sure it's a great value for the citizens of Morton. And I, again, caution how we go about bringing these projects to the board and making decisions like this, that when we've got a sizable budget deficit, so now we're using a resolution to use, justify the use of gas funds for the installation of sidewalk, because we're relocating a gas line. And I'm cautioning that we've got to be careful going forward, I guess, how we create or establish some criteria for making these decisions, so we don't come across with a cavalier approach on this. We can't afford to. So.
It is a safety issue. Sunday, there's a lady going down that section of missing sidewalk, walking along the curb with a cane. In that traffic, I'll bet you ventures to be around the 35 mile an hour speed limit on those merging lanes. I seen it myself, me and my wife and dog drove through the area while she was walking. And that's the only section of sidewalk missing, and she was walking.
I would echo those sentiments, that I do believe it is a safety issue. And I also believe there's other places in town that would benefit from having sidewalk extended. We had the opportunity here with the granting of the right-of-way to do that. An unintended consequence was to be able to relocate the gas main, which I think, you know, was, works well to offset the issue of taking out the general fund, where, as you said, we have a deficit. Being able to benefit that, the gas installation allows it to be used, taken out of the gas fund, and I think that works out perfectly. It's, you know, we didn't see that, that wasn't the reason I brought it up. I brought it up as a safety issue, but it kind of worked out well, having the gas line, being able to relocate there, getting it out of the street.
You do need to remember, we have the largest gas municipally owned in the state of Illinois. We have five people that do all the work, and our superintendent wants it moved, because there's problems with it. So I think it's appropriate to get it done and let them five people move on to something else. Any other comments? Call the roll.
Bluenier.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Layman.
Yes.
Newman.
Abstain.
Parrott.
Yes.
Belsley.
Abstain.
Motion passes.
All right. Next item is item D. In front of you is ordinance 19-15. This is an ordinance granting variance to structure at 420 North Tennessee Avenue under Section 4510 of the Morton Municipal Code.
Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Are you moving to approve or not to approve?
Moving to, is this, this is the, we're talking about with the solar, right?
No, there's no.
Oh, the flood, oh, yes.
Moving to approve.
Yeah.
Any comments?
If I could just briefly describe this, Methodist Church with Jim's here to represent the church has requested variance. We've been working with them for quite some time. Unfortunately, way back when, had, you know, the church was built, you know, around the floodplain, so as a part of their process to add on to their church, they had to undergo a significant study of the floodplain, at which the results are back. And as such, they are requesting a variance, of which I support, and our other floodplain administrator, Jamie Bullard, supports. But if I could just talk about item three in here, this variance is hereby granted to subject structure, which is the existing Methodist church. It shall permit substantial improvements to the subject structure, as more particularly set forth on the plans which are attached. I've left those on all of your tables, if you wanted to look at it. And this would allow it, without the structure, to be structurally dry floodproofed, and also not to be able to come into compliance with the flood protection elevation set forth in the regulations. So to quickly summarize, their new structure will be attached. It will be higher, it will meet, the new church will meet the two-foot floodplain elevation. The existing church will not. It will still be above the floodplain, it will not meet that. So that's what the request is here, that I have a signed copy from Jim, and so we support that. So we're just looking for approval from all of you for that variance.
So the existing structure is above the floodplain, but not above the two-foot?
Believe it's .48, so a little less than 5/10 above the floodplain.
Flood, yes.
So it does not meet the two-foot flood protection elevation.
And there's no liability we accept by virtue of passing this?
And there was, as a part of the application, the church signed a document essentially acknowledging that there could be additional liabilities and that they fall on them.
Yeah, they've expended, obviously, this is phase two. I believe there's another phase eventually to add on, but they've, this has been a two-year journey for all of us, started back in October of 16. They've expended a lot of money, but I think we are where we're at. Existing church is where it's at. We're thankful that it is above the floodplain. This is just merely a formality for all of us to understand what those responsibilities are. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions. I'd be seeking your approval tonight.
Any other questions or comments? If not, call the roll.
Herr.
Yes.
Layman.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes.
That's all you have, clerk?
That's all I have tonight.
Plan and zoning.
Three items tonight, Your Honor. The first being special use petition between Morton Park District and the Morton Township. Hurstene Cemetery, which is located out on Hurstene Road. And in your packet, there's a drawing that kind of shows the existing cemetery. It's that yellow block with the existing special use shown on it. And what's in red and is labeled there is area of special use. They want to, they've been able to receive this ground from the park district, so it'll take care of their future needs in terms of that cemetery for years and years to come. And that, probably hearing those hell at the plan commission in September, unanimous recommendation to approve this, so I bring that to you tonight.
Can I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Any other comments? Call the roll.
Layman.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Bluenier.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
The next item that I have is the preliminary and final plaid for Fieldstone, Section 4. And there's a copy laying on each one of those tables that you might want to look at. I'll point out a couple of things to you here. If you look up to the north part of that, on what's called labeled Hanover Street, between lots 164 and 165, there's a, an easement there for a cluster mailbox unit. This is something new from the post office. Sometime during this past year, early on, they came, approached Craig and I about wanting to, they want to establish those, and they wanted to do it in some existing subdivisions where the lots have already been sold, and we don't have an easement for that, and probably isn't going to be anybody that's going to want it in their front yard. So they were gracious enough to let us go ahead and build those out, and then we can start going forward with that in this new phase of Fieldstone 4. So you'll notice that change. And then I'd point out a note to you in the upper right-hand corner about a couple of variances for front building setback, which in some of these, they would have normally been a 35-foot front setback, but they've been reduced to 25, and that's because of, some of them were in relation to a berm that will be built along East Jackson Street in the backyards of these homes. And then some of the other ones were, it was just going to make them line up with the houses adjacent to them, that met the 35 and 25-foot requirements. Other than that, everything Craig has worked through, the engineering, we're good.
Well, we, I talked to Roger, I do have the plans here, if you want to see them. They're not 100% complete yet, we're pretty good with that. We're just, you know, so approval tonight, we're still not going to record it until we get these done. They just didn't get everything to us in time, but I think, I think everything's, you know, shaping up to be done within a week or so. Some of the outstanding items for us is the cluster box. I'm working with Pat, and Roger and I are on a cluster box ordinance. Obviously, there's a lot of details with this, you know, lighting, safety, all that, and making sure that the taxpayers aren't responsible for the long-term ownership and maintenance of these. They can be difficult, you know, have keys, they're locked. There's a lot of stuff that goes on with cluster boxes that we don't want to really assume, and the residents should be responsible for those. So we'll be working with Pat to come to that, come up with something fairly soon, within probably a month. But if I could just add on the cluster box, that's, you know, like Roger said, that's postal service. I really don't see us anything new, based on our discussions with them, which is pretty much federal government. I don't think you're going to see mailboxes in front of houses anymore. I think those days are done, from what we're being told. Sure, I think other places are dealing with that. You know, Peoria is dealing with it. So I just want to get that out there, for people to expect that. I'm sure when the first homeowner moves in, we'll probably still get questions on that. But I think this is the future, whether we like it or not, as far as mailboxes. So on a new subdivision, I think we'll work a little harder. I think it's something we need to look at more, maybe in a common space area. But I think working with Mr. Armstrong here, we're going to put him in between a couple corner lots, and then for his future stuff, we've got to kind of organize where it will still make sense and look right. So those are the couple of things I just wanted to add. There will be an IDOT permit. I'm working with Steve Galbraith at IDOT. He's kind of leaning on us to finalize, and we'll get back to him. So there's some, there's some work to do even with the storm sewer that runs along Jackson, that's a little tricky, 36-inch storm sewer. So we're working through those details right now, but there's no reason, I think that should hold up the plaid at this point.
Is that the discussion with IDOT finalized with regard to the points of access on 150?
Yes, we're good with that. And we don't need a right turn or anything like that, so the plaid's good. It's more or less just dealing with the drainage, the storm sewer, and making sure all that works. But they're going to rely on our review of that, and then at that point, it'll just be a formality with them to get a permit.
I'm looking on the preliminary plaid, and I realize we're just approving the final plaid for the one phase tonight, but it looks like on the preliminary plaid, is that the village's property that is to the east of the subdivision? That it looks like the road goes into? I'm trying to get a bearing of a.
Yeah, I'm going to get to it.
It is?
Yeah, it would tie into that eventually, and that's the two, I think it's a two-acre parcel.
Okay.
It's got a sign for a future fire station. That's what that parcel is.
Yeah, that's what that, okay.
I just have a question. In subdivisions that I've seen in other states where they have these clusters, they tend to have a widened entryway with landscape, and then it's there, and it's not in front of anybody's house. Is there a thought to do that in the future?
That's what I'm saying, in the future, we'll work that as part of the design. This thing's already going, they already had a plan, so we're kind of trying to fit it in. But the standard for it, we're working hard on that. Obviously, you got snow removal, lighting, all those things. So I think it'll be, you know, no parking in front of it, all those sort of things that, we'll bring that back, but I think we feel pretty good about where we want them and what they're going to look like and all that, so that it's at least standardized going forward. But hopefully, we get it more of a common area in the future.
Will that be homeowners associations taking care of it?
Well, that's always the concern, but that's where we're talking to Pat, that an ordinance may be able to cover that better than a homeowner's. You know, because a lot of our subdivisions in town, you know, they're set up, but nobody has their annual meeting, they're not, so they just kind of, I guess, dissolve. You could probably add on to that, Pat.
We'll be, this presents new infrastructure concern, you know, most of your subdivision infrastructure is dedicated, once it's completed and we accept it, this isn't going to be dedicated infrastructure, but it's going to be necessary for the subdivision. So we'll be exploring options, including requiring those to be either owned by a homeowner association, or the possibility of requiring the developer to post a bond to secure the future maintenance and upkeep of those agreements.
My hope is that there would be active homeowners association, and every subdivision is how I would prefer it to be. I just don't know how we enforce that. I think it's good, I will say on the ones I've dealt with, Fieldstone, it tends to have more of a negative feel from residents on homeowners association, because a lot of our subdivisions don't have the big amenities that others have. But they're a positive. I really do think they're a positive to enforce there, a lot of times more, you know, their standards in there are above and beyond our ordinances. I think they're good things, but I will say, from my experience, I think you can add to, Roger, they get a little negative perception when the developer's trying to unload that onto them, to give it to them to enforce going forward. But if there's a way that we can make those be enforced, I think that's a good thing long-term for subdivisions.
Another positive that you might want to point out, and Randy, you mentioned, is this other access to Jackson Street. So we're going to be getting a lot of traffic that is on our street, the Village of Morton Streets, onto a state route, and they won't be going through the neighborhood like up Oregon or Jefferson Street. They're going to be going right out of there to the north and onto Jackson, they can go east-west wherever they want to go. So I think that's a, that's, I know those neighbors on Oregon are going to like that.
Yeah, a lot of people in Oregon will be very happy. I can't promise that all the traffic's going to start going that way, but it'll alleviate some in the future.
We do need a first and a second to approve this for more comments.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Any other comments, trustees? Or questions? Call the roll.
Newman.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Bluenier.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Layman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
The last item that I have before you tonight is Resolution 12-19, Resolution Making Recommendation to Tazewell County ZBA regarding Tazewell County ZBA Case 18-4, or 46-S. And Pat has volunteered to walk you through that, since he was the author of that.
In your packets are two resolutions. We didn't have, based on the gravement of the issue presented and the fact that you had a presentation regarding it, in lieu of informal feedback to Roger, I thought it'd be more appropriate and better support for your staff to have an adopted resolution that they could pass along. I wasn't sure what direction the board felt they wanted to go, so I gave you basically dueling versions of resolution. So in your motion, second, I would suggest it'd be appropriate to indicate whether you're wishing to adopt the recommendation to deny or recommendation to award the requested special use permit.
And if a motion doesn't get a second, we won't vote on that motion.
That's correct.
I'll start off with a motion to approve the recommendation, make a positive recommendation.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right. Any discussion, comments for the trustees?
I'm sure there was probably discussion in the planning and zoning committee, probably especially, as far as question about future development. Is, has, was there?
From Tazewell County.
There was, there was no discussion about.
The Tazewell County cases don't go to our plan commission for a hearing.
Okay.
They just go to your board. If this is a property within the village limits, then for a special use, we'd go through our planning commission hearing, but not for a case in the county.
So what usually happens is whatever we recommend, Roger connects with the county and makes our recommendation known to them within the mile and a half.
Understood. I guess in between Craig and Roger, is there any developers or anyone that reached out to you guys in particular, you know, supporting or opposing in the sense of saying, hey, that's an area that we could see ourselves want to develop in the near future? I know one person we're talking about in particular, I don't know Mr. Armstrong's stance, but I know he has a subdivision in that area that he's been growing for some time now. Has there been any conversation that you've heard from some developers?
I have not heard from Tom, and I don't think Tom would be interested, but I haven't heard anything from anybody.
No. I think that would, I mean, from that standpoint, that'd probably be a little bit of a stretch if you look at the timeframe, because we, the good thing you've got to remember is that you're looking at a 20-year lease with probably a five and a 10, or consecutive fives, on the lease of the ground, which at that point, they can actually pull up shop and move on, and that ground can go right back to it. So you kind of have a 20 to 30-year window that gives you an opportunity to do something like this. So from a prevented standpoint, I don't, I hope we have that problem. Or we, I really would, I just don't see how.
I'd say it'd be a positive problem.
Yeah.
I would echo that sentiment. I think if we have that issue in the future, I think it'd be a blessing to deal with that sometime in the future. I did speak to several landlords surrounding that property, making sure that they, you know, weren't planning on, you know, developing soon, and they, none of them had any issue with it. They were aware of it, and they were finally going forward.
Is it power decision to renew after 20?
No.
Is it the solar farms?
Landowner and the, it's the landowner's choice then, if he wants to keep going and/or then the actual company that is, that is doing it, if it's profitable for him, are they, you know, going to go forward?
So then we're locked out for an indefinite amount of time, no matter what type of development is possible.
Yeah, but we don't have say over whether it goes or not anyway. It's just more of a favorable recommendation to the, you know.
And Colleen is here from last meeting, so if anyone had any questions for her specific. I know she's mentioned she would be glad to answer any.
Colleen, I guess it would be a good question, I would think, for you. With the developer and, you know, the landowner, is there, has there been talk about going further towards Bloomington or more out, you know, from that way? Or is there a reason why that plot specifically was chose?
For landowner, can you speak to why that particular plot was selected? For one, if the government has to be near a substation or a preface line, this property meets that requirement, and the landowner was interested in doing this, and he can certainly speak for himself on that.
I think the main thing is where it's located and adjacent to Silco's preface power line. There's a wall right there, so you've got a guy wire on it, but we've got to run the wires over to Silco. That's basically, they contacted me about, we first had a different parcel in mind, we decided against that, because of the transmission line, it would be too far to transmit the power to the Silco grid. So we, I talked to them about this one, and they thought it was a good idea. Silco approved it so far, and that's why we picked that particular piece of property.
Okay. I didn't know, I guess the question more or less is, and I guess I don't know where the property lines and everything end. I guess that's my question more or less was, so if we're not talking about a huge area of land, it's just, even if it went just a little bit further east, maybe that much further of the possibility of future development? You know, for example?
Because roads are, Tennessee Avenue's on the east end of this property.
Okay.
It's a 32-acre parcel. They're going to take 20 acres of it and build 16, 16 acres will actually be in solar panels. They're going to put a fence up, they're going to put pollinator plants underneath them. I've seen pictures of what they do, I like it. I would not be for a bunch of weeds going up Harvard Road like that.
And that was one discussion we had. If it was in, this is in the county, but if it was in the village, I mean, our ordinance is eight inches. I know Colleen got back to me on that and said they could mow if they need to. If it was in the village, this is in the county. Throw that out there.
Any other comments?
Even if it was in the village, I mean, I would think.
Well, you'd have to redo the ordinance.
You'd have, you'd have to make some adjustment to the ordinance, I guess.
Yep.
I too am a little concerned about it being that close to the city and us not being able to end the contract if we want to or need to. So that's, that's the way I feel with it. We're on the east side of the road, that's, that would be a different, different story.
Well, I, I think in the future, the market is going to determine what happens with this property. Development moves that way, you know, the market's going to make it attractive to develop it once the contract expires. So I don't think there's any long-term risk as far as hindering development out that way.
And the filings are not, they're not put in concrete, so should you get to the point, as you pointed out, where they need to be removed earlier than the agreement that the landowner has signed, it is something a matter of just pulling those out, taking off the panels. The ordinance, the state law requires that any developer returns that land to its original condition before the solar array is there. So it does have to go back to its original.
Those were one of my first questions for these folks, were what about your exit strategy? Have you leave what's, what's left? Concrete? All they're going to do is put posts in the ground and some panels on top of them. Be no concrete, no gravel? Should be easy to put back to regular farming.
There will be small concrete pad that will house at least for, for those who voted for the AC/DC exchange. Other than that, that's the only concrete.
Any other comments?
I guess I'd just like to hear just further, just from Roger and Craig both, you know, as far as your recommendation one way or the other, just because all the knowledge that you guys have with directly, most, the majority of landowners and business owners are speaking yes to us, but I would think most, the majority are working with you. So in your thought process and from everything you've heard, what would be, you know, determination one way or the other?
You want to go first, or?
Yeah, sure. I mean, I've had a number of people quiz me about it, but I haven't had anybody that had any, I guess, reservation, like, oh, that's like the dumbest idea I've ever heard. That's not been anything like that. So in terms of negative feedback on that site, none. Not so much the case on the other one that we've discussed, but.
Yeah, definitely. I would, I like to look at it more towards, instead of just guessing what can develop. I mean, utilities, sanitary is a tough one to get to that site. If there were utilities to the site, I would recommend no. I think Harding and Cortland and Tennessee is a big corridor. If it could be on the other side of the road, I think that's great. And that's my opinion. That's why we made this in the form of a resolution for you guys to vote on it. But I think my only thing would be due to the limited with the sanitary and the difficult to get sanitary to that site limits it. If there was sanitary to that site, I would say no, just because I think that's a big corridor. We spent millions on Cortland. If you look at our planning, the purple dash is future arterial. There's always been a long plan to come back around. In that sense, I would say no. I think the 25 to 40-year is a long time. But like I said, with sanitary, I think that changes, I think that's going to be tough to develop that site long-term. So I appreciate your asking, but I think this one, the other one is tougher on Main Street.
So you're saying, you say both sides, but you're leaning more, you're leaning more towards yes?
I would think this would be acceptable due to it's difficult to get the utilities there, especially sanitary sewer. If you could get the sanitary sewer there, I think that would be a little more attractive to develop within a 25-year period, for sure, just to, just due to Cortland and what's going on there. I think the other side of the road, of which solar companies have been interested in, directly across the street, this has nothing to do with the landowner. We're dealing with 10 different landowners throughout the village. That would be my, my comment on it.
Thank you.
Now granted, this may never happen. There's going to be a lottery, so I think that's the frustrating thing for me, just to give that some context, is if I could pick where we wanted to, that would be great. But I think the state and politics will decide where those sites are going to be, in my opinion.
Thank you, Craig.
Anything else? Call the roll.
Parrott.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Bluenier.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Lehman.
Yes.
Newman.
Yes.
Motion passes.
That's all you have?
That's all I have.
Villages trustees, any of you have anything tonight? If not, there is no executive sessions tonight, so I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.